All right.
Yeah, right. I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. I need a motion for the approval of the closed session agenda, please. A motion is in order.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Mr. Trenum?
I move that the closed session agenda be approved as recommended.
I'll second.
Discussion. Okay, please vote.
Absolutely nothing.
Oh, they moved. They're right here.
Where am I, John?
I'm not sure, but we'll figure it out.
They're in the witness box. Do you want to do?
We can do the old way.
All I have is this up here.
I think we clicked on the agenda.
No, I went into this because I didn't see where you had pointed me up.
See, this always happens when you...
Oh, I remember.
Something always goes wrong when you're trying to get through this.
She needs to go back to the meeting.
Do we need to press F5, all of us? Are you guys good?
Yeah, no, we should.
We're good.
Oh. I don't know, just F5, everyone. Maybe we'll get the vote. Enter the board meeting.
So, can we make the motion?
I didn't get a tally, but...
The vote is five yes, three absent. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion that they're closed session. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss and consider the assignment and appointment, performance, disciplining, and resignation of specific employees, appoint these or officers, Prince William County School Board, under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to consult with division counsel and receive legal advice regarding actual and probable litigation where such consultation and briefing in open session will adversely affect negotiating or litigating posture of school board under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7. And three, to consult with division counsel regarding a specific personnel issue requiring the advice of counsel, under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
A second.
Okay, discussion. Let's vote, please. We have the votes. Okay, why those tally? We're going to move on to closed session.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on, closed session certification. A motion is in order. Ms. Jessie?
I move that pursuant to Virginia Codes 2.2-3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting of April 3, 2019, be certified by adoption of the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Ralston?
I move that pursuant to Virginia Codes 2.2-3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting of April 3, 2019, be certified by adoption of the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Ralston? Thank you. Discussion. Okay, please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Thank you. Number nine on the agenda, our presentation of Positively Prince William County Schools. We are kicking off the business of our meetings with a response to community requests to hear more about the good things that our school, students, and staff members are accomplishing. We are working with the schools and our communication team to spotlight a few of the good news items at these meetings and elsewhere with the term Positively PWCS. Tonight's presentation comes from the Woodbridge District and is introduced by the Woodbridge rep, Ms. Lori Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am, well, they gave me a script. I don't think thrilled quite cuts it. I am beyond thrilled that tonight's Positively PWCS presentation comes from Freedom High School. Principal Inez Bryant is here this evening to share more about an outstanding program that prepares our students for life after high school and definitely one of my favorite places in the entire county, that is the Freedom Bistro and Bakery.
Dr. Lefteef, members of the school board, Dr. Walz, we would like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share the amazing accomplishments of our student and staff who operate our bistro and bakery. This has been a vision of Mrs. Marilyn Austin, the Special Education Department Chair, and I since I arrived in 2007. Here with me tonight, Mrs. Austin, Department Chair, Mrs. Griffin, bistro teacher, Mrs. Cheeks, a parent of one of our students in the bistro, and Mr. Schrammel, the supervising administrator. Last year, with the help of Dr. Walz and members of the superintendent staff, we were able to undergo a complete renovation so that our students would have a commercial kitchen to work in. Ms. Griffin, our current bistro teacher, and her staff host a luncheon for Dr. Walz and his guests, which celebrated our renovation, and we want to thank you for that. In the video, you will see students with exceptionalities and staff operating our bistro and bakery. Over 50 students have participated in the bistro and bakery for the past two years. They prepare the food, they take orders, make deliveries, and serve all meals. Four days a week, they serve breakfast and lunch to staff outside community members and Prince William County offices. The bistro has hosted luncheons at the Kelly Building for over 100 guests, and they catered our high school prom. Please show the video.
Would you remember what two kinds of sauces we have?
White sauce.
And?
Red sauce.
Okay.
I'm here this week at Freedom High School, the home of the Eagles and the Freedom Bistro and Bakery. The Bistro and Bakery is a mini-restaurant within the school that serves as vocational training for students with special needs. Managed and staffed by students, the bistro serves lunches to staff and provides meals for school sports teams. Students who participate have the opportunity to create menus, put together ingredients for recipes, and market their delicious meals. They also learn customer service and technology skills, all while building relationships with each other and their customers. The bistro recently received a makeover that included adding a commercial kitchen, and all staff members who work with students in the bistro are served, safe, certified. And I can tell you, I'm sampling some of their food, and it's amazingly good. This is a great opportunity to provide needed training for students in their quest to become career-ready.
Through their participation in the bistro, these students become lifelong learners. They obtain the necessary skills needed to transition from school to employment to a career path. They develop working relationship with parents and the community leaders. Presently, through the employee program and the skills they've obtained by working in the bakery/bistro, our students are working at Bob Evans, Tropical Smoothie, Nando Perry Perry, Burger King, Chick-fil-A, Quantico Marine Base, Pitkins Hardware, and McDonald's. Our vision, in not-too-distant future, is to open our own restaurant called Learning to Fly, as our exceptional Eagles will be leaving the nest to begin the next chapter in their lives. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
Principal Bryant, very quickly, I just wanted to know if you were still running the bistro bus during the sports season?
We are not running the bistro bus during the sports season, but my vision for next year is to move the bus to the visitor's side of the stadium so that away teams and parents do not have to transition across the field, and that will be run by our students as well.
I just wanted to plug that a little bit because I had the pleasure of touring the school the year I believe that you opened the bistro bus, and it was a fantastic interdisciplinary project for the school with the art department, our special needs with the bistro. Fantastic, very creative, very innovative, and I just want to applaud you. I plug the bistro regularly. Very rarely have I had the opportunity to dine there, but I can say as someone who has dined very, very many places, that is absolutely one of the best customer service experiences that I have ever had, and everyone is so very caring and kind, and I can echo Dr. Walz's sentiment. It was very, very good food, so thank you so much for all that you do and continue to do. One of my greatest memories is watching a 21-year-old student going into the bistro I was eating and was like, "I don't ever want to leave. Can you find a way to keep me here?" And I think that that says a lot, so thank you.
And one of the things that I just shine about, that what everyone does not know, is that there's a large portion of those students who were non-verbal. They are no longer. They can ask you, "What can I do for you today? What would you like to eat?" And so I have to applaud the Special Education Department, Mrs. Jenkins, Mrs. Griffin. It's phenomenal, phenomenal, so thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Ms. Jessie?
I had the opportunity of visiting the bistro before, I think you had a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and you opened the other wing, and you invited me, and the food was delicious. I thank you so much for the invitation. It was handled in such a professional manner, and the service that I received was better than service I've received in many restaurants. I think it's a fabulous idea, and it's a way of really getting kids into the real work of life. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate just being recognized because definitely all of my exceptional students, not only are they in the bistro, but they're in the classrooms. If they have a passion for art, they're in art. If they're into music, they're in music. So they're all-inclusive in this building, so thank you again.
We're going to pause for a second before we go into the public meeting. Okay, I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. There will be a moment of silence at my request, and then will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have any students in the audience who would like to come forward and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance? Anyone? There's a lot of people out in the audience. Yeah, here we go. Okay, please rise.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, before you go, what school and your name?
Isaac Mardo Patriot High School.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the approval of the agenda. I need a motion in order for the approval of our public meeting agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, the public meeting agenda is recommended.
Mr. Deutsch, do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Williams? Discussion. Okay, let's vote, please.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt consent agenda as recommended.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Deutsch first, Ms. Second, Ms. Williams. Discussion. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman. I want to recognize National Tret Syndrome Awareness Month, and this is something that we have added to our school board agenda yearly for several years now. Tret Syndrome Awareness Month is May 15th to June 15th every year. A Tret syndrome is an inherited lifelong neurological disorder characterized by involuntary, rapid, sudden body movements or repeated vocalizations called tics. It affects up to one in every 100 school-aged children, and usually there are concurrent diagnoses that go along with it, such as OCD or ADHD, anxiety disorders, occasionally depression. And while my son didn't have all of those associated disorders, my son did have Tret Syndrome, does have Tret syndrome. And so I appreciate the school system recognizing National Tret Syndrome Awareness Month every year, and thank you for adding this to the agenda. I also want to highlight National School Nurse Day, which is, pulling up the right resolution, which is on May 8th, and thank our nurses for everything they do, and as a part of this, yes, applause is good. And as a part of this budget we just passed, we will, for the first time, have a school nurse at every one of our schools, which is really important for our kids. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite, Ms. Williams, then Ms. Jessie?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to take a special moment out to say thank you for Administrative Professionals Week. I'm a big believer, and they are the backbone behind what we see in the front and very often don't get the credit due, so I just want to say thank you to them, as well as to our Food and Nutrition Services. We recognize them for the week that they are honored. They feed our kids, they see our kids, they're sometimes our kids' confidence as they go through the line. I know quite a few school cafeteria workers, and I think that's a very important job, so I just want to say thank you for that, and thank you to our school system for recognizing Exceptional Children's Week as well.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Jessie?
Well, I too wanted to congratulate the nurses. I was a principal for a long time, and I don't know how I live without a nurse. And there were so many instances, once I had a nurse, and I thought back of how frequently I was at the hospital with kids, and I was just afraid something was going to happen. You guys have done a tremendous job. The other aspect, when I came on the board, I didn't realize that we had a nursing school, practical nursing school, and they have a graduation ceremony, and if members of the board, you might want to look at that and try to attend that ceremony. It's a beautiful ceremony. And I also wanted to comment on the Exceptional Children's Week. One of the things when we think about exceptional children, we think of gifted kids, and there are different categories of giftedness and different types of giftedness and learning differently, and having the bistro here tonight, I think, is perfect for this particular week. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Ralston, you said you wanted to say something.
I just want to thank the volunteers that show up at your schools every single day. It's not unusual to walk into a school and find at least one or two people there to do something to help our teachers, to help our principals, our custodians, so for that, I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to just highlight one thing on the consent agenda here. We have three re-zonings that we have impact statements for. We should have now a consistent format for how we're going to be addressing these, but some of these are pretty significant. One possible development, it has about 500 units in it, another has almost 1,000, or a little over 1,000, so these are pretty significant developments, and they're worth the community paying attention to, and I believe our impact statements say that we're opposed to all of them due to the stress they continue to put on our school division.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Without that further being said, vote, please. As we wait for the vote, we're going to move on to student representative. During this time on the agenda, our student representative and their alternates, if they are in attendance, have the opportunity to share their interests. We will start with Suzanne from our Patriot High School.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's having a stellar day so far. Over the past two weeks, I had the pleasure of joining in on Patriot's SCA meeting, and the discussion with the student leaders can best be summarized as differentiating between short-term and long-term impacts of school policies or general routines. One of the bigger items of discussions surrounded, construction. For those that don't know, Patriot is experiencing some construction on Vint Hill and Kettle Run Road, which are the roads that are used to enter the high school. The students noted that although efforts have been made to decrease the construction during, both during the beginning and end of school, that the construction that still occurs during these time periods is causing an amount of traffic that is becoming a burden on going to and from school. For instance, students may arrive late to class, missing the earliest part of their instruction, or they may not be able to get home in a timely manner. Looking towards the future, the students suggested that the county tries its best to create expediency with their construction projects in order to limit these short-term effects. Speaking about construction expediency, the discussion turned to building of new schools. The student leaders were in agreeance that the school board take into consideration longer-term goals when building a new school. For instance, they believe that schools should be built with the plan to not pass maximum capacity the year of or two years after the school is built. By limiting the problem of quick population growth through more expedient construction or multiple construction projects at one time, the impacts of overpopulation can be limited. The student leaders also spent time discussing the transition between middle school and high school. The student leaders suggested that high school students go to their local middle schools before eighth-grade scheduling begins. The students believed that they were not properly made aware of the implications of taking certain levels of classes going into their freshman year. For instance, taking a lower-level class during freshman year can hinder students' ability to take a higher-level science class in their senior year, and by sending the high school students who have experienced the classes firsthand, they would be able to provide personal and beneficial insight to the students in middle school. Now, I should have talked about this during the last board meeting, but it's time to start talking about the application process for the new student representative. I've already had a few students come up to me and ask me when this new application process will start, and my response is always that, "I'll get back to you." As the previous student representative mentioned, I too think we need to start the application process as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, last year, when I was made aware of the position, I had to go away for a month to study humanities at summer residential governor's school. And then only because I was co-captains with Patriot's debate team at the time, former alternate student representative, Zaki Pandashiri, I was able to contact the previous student representative, and we had one meeting before the school year started. That meeting showed to be necessary because the past student representative outlined my basic duties and quelled any of the fears that I had. I believe that the goal should be to have a, should be, should be to have a student representative chosen and announced by the end of the year so he or she can attend at least one of the meetings between all the SCA presidents and tag along to one of my meetings to the high school's SCA. This is critical because those opportunities will clearly portray the future student representative's duties, creating clarity on what is expected of the position. I understand that some may be concerned about testing season coming up, but we still have time before that. In fact, excluding spring break, we have about a month before AP exam season and SOL season. For those that do not know, the student representative has to fill out an online application, be chosen to be the school candidate, write a timed writing, timed essay, and go in for an interview by a panel of teachers. If we wait until after testing season, there would be little time for an application process and no time to have the student representative to go to the meetings. If we start within the end of the week, students would have time to fill out an online application to be due either before or after spring break. The school committee could finalize the school candidate before testing season, and then there isn't much to complete. I would also like to remind everyone that the students who apply to this position are also probably willing to work hard, so tying this into testing season in a minute way would not provide an extravagant burden to the student. However, I believe going forward that the application process should be planned around these dates, considering that they are set up in the beginning of the year. I hope the best for this process and would greatly appreciate any help in starting the process back up again. Now, on this board meeting, student representative version of the student spotlight, I would like to point to Amelia Dom. Amelia is a junior from Forest Park High School, and she won the grand prize for the Prince William County Service Authorities Water Project, Water Art Inventational. I would like to note that there are many Prince William County School students who were recognized as well. Amelia won the grand prize through her black-and-white photograph interpreting the theme, "Every Life and Job Depend on Water." Good job, Amelia, keep up the hard work. I'll have my next meeting at Woodbridge High School on the 10th. As always, students can reach me on my Prince William County given email. I'll spell it out, F-A-R-A-J-S-A-19@PWCS-EDU.org. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are the alternates in the audience? I don't think I see them. Okay, they are not here. So, we are moving on to citizen comments on the agenda and non-agenda items. It looks like we've had, looking at the updated list, nine people sign up in advance and three people that sign up at the door. Everyone that signed up in advance will have a chance to speak if we are still within our 30-minute window. Looks like we're going to be fine with that anyways, so I will call the first 10 names in a second. After I call your names, you will have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. Yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up and you should stop. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. So I'm going to call the first 10 up. Christina Kolos, Rojan, Mr. Jessie, Richard Jessie, Palmer Denny, Mr. Emmett Fletcher, Juan McPhail, Pat House, Kate Olson Flynn, Aurora Hurtado. I might just call everyone up. I think we have enough seats closed. Isaac Mardo. I apologize, and Kerseidric Klyt, and Gabrielle Troya. Sorry about, yes. Okay, we will begin with Ms. Kolos.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Christina Kolos, and I believe that my address is on record with the clerk. Do I need to repeat it anyway? Okay. I'm here tonight to speak about the issue of reimbursement of members. I'm personally here on behalf of Ms. Jessie, who I've had the pleasure of knowing for some years, and I know that her integrity speaks for itself, but also as someone who's worked for a public official before and driven across the county, I know what a burden that can place on you. And so not as a reflection of Ms. Jessie or her financial situation, which I know nothing about, but just as a citizen who would like to make sure that our board can be representative of everyone in our community and not just those who can afford to pay out of pocket for the visits and the education and the different events that they're called on to attend, I would like to make sure that you take that into consideration as you're looking at reimbursements. Additionally, as a citizen, I was disappointed in the way that this all came out. I feel like our school board should be people who are looking for real solutions for our students and not digging at each other politically, and so I would have liked to see this handled very differently, and I was disappointed... I apologize, and Kerseidric Klyt, and Gabrielle Troya. Sorry about... Okay. We will begin with Ms. Kolos.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Christina Kolos, and I believe that my address is on record with the clerk. Do I need to repeat it anyway? Okay. I'm here tonight to speak about the issue of reimbursement of members. I'm personally here on behalf of Ms. Jessie, who I've had the pleasure of knowing for some years, and I know that her integrity speaks for itself. But also, as someone who's worked for a public official before and driven across the county, I know what a burden that can place on you. And so not as a reflection of Ms. Jessie or her financial situation, which I know nothing about, but just as a citizen who would like to make sure that our board can be representative of everyone in our community and not just those who can afford to pay out of pocket for the visits and the education and the different events that they're called on to attend. I would like to make sure that you take that into consideration as you're looking at reimbursements. Additionally, as a citizen, I was disappointed in the way that this all came out. I feel like our school board should be people who are looking for real solutions for our students and not digging at each other politically. And so I would have liked to see this handled very differently, and I was disappointed in the way that the information was brought out. But I hope, as you're considering this, that it's looked at from the perspective of making sure that the school board is inclusive of people regardless of if they're retired or if they have a second job and are able to support themselves going to all these different events. And I just wanted to thank Ms. Jessie for her 46 years of service to Prince William County Schools and to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Rojan.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rojan Robotham, and my address is on file. I'm here to speak about April being the month of the military child. I know, I'm back again. So since I was here last year, the governor and the VA Department of Education have formally established the Purple Star Program, which identifies and recognizes schools that are meeting the needs of military children. On average, military children move six to nine times between kindergarten and their high school graduation. This may sound trivial to you until you try to maintain educational development across state and country lines. The Department of Education Military Support Team completed round one of the Purple Star last fall. I want to highlight that of the 62 Virginia schools awarded the Purple Star, only three Prince William County Schools, Ashland, Penn, and Porter, earned this designation. This saddens me. Fairfax had 14 schools and Stafford had six. With the large number of military children in Prince William County Schools, I really believe that we can do better. Military families will be looking for schools with this designation when they are searching for places to live. Moreover, the Prince William County community has a strong support to military families. This should extend into the school system. The second round of the Purple Star applications began this month. I want to encourage more elementary, middle, and high schools to apply. Military children in all stages of educational development need support. I will personally make myself available to any school that needs help in preparing their application. I want to thank Justin Wilk for helping advocate for this program and your support to schools. Additionally, I want to thank Allison for her support in actively engaging with the schools in your community. Your firsthand knowledge of military child needs is valuable. The month of the military child is the perfect opportunity to learn more about this community. In closing, I would love to return here again next year and report that Prince William County is leading the way, that all Prince William County Schools with military children have earned a Purple Star. Please continue to promote this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Rojan. Mr. Richard Jessie.
Good evening. My name is Richard Jessie. My address is on file. My wife asked me to be moderate this evening, so I will try to comply. You know, the issue on the reimbursement is two things. One is the fact that we feel that a person should be entitled to be reimbursed. If you don't want to be reimbursed, you don't have to be, but you shouldn't deny other people who deserve to. The second issue is the disparaging remarks that there was something inappropriate that Mrs. Jessie did. And then on the Facebook page where you said that the person was, she was trying to do to have financial gain. There's a difference between financial gain and being asked to be reimbursed for expenses. During the 40 months that you publicly put out there, she drove just within the county 9,000 miles, okay, within the county. Just getting back to and forth through the 40 months to the school board was over 1,000 miles. That's not asking for financial gain, that's asking for reimbursement. Now, some of you feel that morally you don't want to support that. That's fine, but you know, don't put your morals on others. In fact, what I would recommend for some of you, who even though you did vote for the budget, complained that the school board was getting a raise and we shouldn't get that big of a raise, what people in the county doesn't, do not realize oftentimes is that you can only get a raise once every four years. So if you didn't get a raise this year, it would be another four years before. But I do have a solution for you. If you don't think you should have gotten that big of a raise, donate some of that raise back to the county or to a charity. And that way, you can morally feel that you're doing what you need to. But I imagine most of us will keep the raise, even though you don't think we deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Palmer Denny.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'd like to take this time to discuss some issues facing many students in several schools. My name is Palmer Denny, a student at Louise M. Benton Middle School. I've collected data through conversations with students about problems in middle and high schools. These schools are Benton Middle, Marsdeller Middle, Lakridge Middle, Saunders Middle, Forest Park High, Potomac High, and Colgan High. Issues range from foul language in school, inappropriate music being played out loud, fights, drugs, vaping on school grounds, and disobedience. One of the biggest problems that is happening is competition and not acceptance, which leads to bullying. Competition in its pure form can be healthy. The competition I am referring to, though, is unhealthy. Many students at the seven schools surveyed believe they are better than everybody else. They make fun of kids who don't have expensive or popular clothes or items. One example of this was, I was sitting in class, and I overheard a conversation between two students. They were arguing about how expensive their clothes were. Then towards the end, one of them started insulting the other for her clothes not being expensive enough. There is nothing good that comes out of making fun of someone because you have more money than them. Some other cases of non-acceptance are not knowing certain terms, not playing certain games, not being able to go out with friends, or even not doing things that are against the rules. All students should strive to accept their fellow classmates for who they are, big or small, big or small, rich or poor. It shouldn't matter. I will now present you with my own suggestions to possibly help with these problems. I am aware that many of the problems start in the home, but that is no excuse for them not being dealt with. All problems can be diminished through staff doing their part and being stricter about them. Drugs can be diminished through more anti-drug campaigns. While Red Ribbon Week is beneficial, I believe that more campaigns conducted throughout the year would be more helpful. Music of all kinds should only be played through headphones and earbuds, or not at all. Acceptance can be fixed through kindness campaigns spread throughout the year and staff making sure students are respecting one another. I realize that many of these problems have been around for years and can't be solved overnight. I also know through recent events that there are kids out there in our county who are on the receiving end of these problems and feel the only way out is either by taking their own lives or retaliating on a scale that leaves many hurt. I would like to know this board's plan to continue to make our schools a safe place to learn and grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Palmer. Emmett Fletcher.
Good evening, Mr. Wilks, school board members, and Dr. Walts. It's good to see you again. I'm here to talk about the reimbursement. This is a serious concern of mine for people that live within the county that are economic disadvantaged. Mr. Deutsch, in your district, you had Mrs. Benn, and she even said that if she had more money, she could have done a lot more to help the kids in Cole's district. So as supervisors, you know, let's make this an equal opportunity for people like Ms. Benn. She did a lot, a lot, and I have a lot of respect for her. And I have a lot of respect, well, she's passed now, but I still have that respect. And I have it for the board as well. Let's don't worry about the party, you know, the politics. Let's do the right thing. I remember not too long ago, I was a child, long time ago. That is true. But in this great state of ours, Commonwealth of Virginia, we had something that was called the literacy test. Each person had to take a test in order to vote at the poll. And a lot of questions were very, very difficult. And later on, they abolished that literacy test, then they came up with the poll taxes. And you had to pay at the poll to vote. You had to pay poll taxes. This right here, I want the opportunity for Louise Benns in Prince William County to be able, if they want to serve on the board, let them, give them the opportunity to do that. Let them give back to the community. If they don't want the reimbursement, just donate it. But we just can't lose out on our citizens that are seniors, that have a lot to give back. And I'm sure that our return on the investment that we give to each and every person, the opportunity to be reimbursed if they desire, the return is going to be much greater than the amount of money that we spend. So, Mr. Deutsch, I'm calling on you. We're not even talking about parties now. We're talking about doing the right thing. Let's set the standard. We are a good county. We got good leaders. We don't always agree, but we got good leaders on the school board and the Board of County Supervisors. Let's reconsider this because, you know, that's the right thing to do. And we will vote in November, but I ask each and every one of you to reconsider your vote. Mr. Deutsch, you're my representative, and I think you'll do the right thing. I'm calling on you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Juan McPhail.
Good evening. Pardon my voice, got a little hoarse, got a little cold. My name is Juan McPhail. I live at 4391 Decatur Drive in Woodbridge, Virginia, 22193. I'm here to speak on this reimbursement issue. I want you to know first and foremost, I am a product of Prince William County Public Schools. I started out my school career here at Antioch Elementary during the days of segregation right here at Prince William County. I went on to Gainesville Elementary, George G. Tyler Marsdeller Junior High School, as we called it at the time, and I graduated from the mighty Stonewall Jackson, the home of the Raiders. Yes, number 62 in your program, number one in your heart. Thank you, thank you. Listen, as far as this reimbursement thing goes, my thoughts are this. I'm sure that intelligent people of this board will make the right decision. This is not anything new. I'm sure if funds are available and if the vote goes through, I'm sure the, and justifiable costs that are incurred will be implemented under the right policies and procedures. The one thing that I would like to share with you, again, as a product of Prince William County Public Schools, a taxpayer, and a registered voter, is this. When I was coming up, there were certain people that were a part of our community whose integrity you did not question. And some of those people were teachers, principals, administrators, members of the school board. Why was that? It's not that they were any higher or lower than anyone else, it's because they brought their integrity with them every day. And it was, and it showed others what integrity is, not what it meant, but what it is. Now, let me say this. I apologize for this. I really don't know anyone on the board other than Ms. Lily Jessie. Here's what I can tell you about Ms. Lily Jessie. Ms. Lily Jessie is above reproach. If there is anyone in my life, other than my wife, of course, that I can say has the highest level of integrity, it is Ms. Lily Jessie. When I heard about this situation, I felt or seemed to be some issue of the question of integrity. Let me say this again to you, that I am confident that everyone on this board has someone in your professional, personal, community life that will stand before a public forum, as I am right now, and say that you are above reproach, as Ms. Lily Jessie is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat House. Pat House. Okay. Kate Olson Flynn.
Good evening, school board and Dr. Walts. My name is Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, and my address is on file. I'm here to speak about the recent board issues that have been in the media lately. Throughout my 20 years or more that I've been working in the education profession, I have encountered people of all ages who think they are experts about schooling, the educational process, or teaching in general. They generally share how they believe schools should be run and how teachers should teach and how the profession is somehow doing something wrong, all based on their personal experience they had in K-12 schools many years ago. And while I appreciate each person's anecdotal feelings, they do not count as knowledge about the profession of educating our youth in schools in the 21st century. There are reasons teachers and administrators take courses and are required to pass exams and earn degrees before they enter the classroom or leave a school. No one would think of telling a doctor or a lawyer based, what to do based on his or her personal experience, yet educators hear this every day. The formal training that educators and administrators like Lily Jessie and Dr. Walts have is priceless when thinking about how to best educate and organize our school system for success. I expect that all people involved in the decision-making of our schools in Prince William County, who may or may not be trained educators, should take the time to inform themselves as best they can about the schools, teaching, children, and the profession their decisions affect. That means that I expect you, the school board members, our school system leaders, to drive to schools and communities in all areas of the county, not just in your districts, to see all our, how all our children live and learn in our county. You should visit classrooms, talk to and with teachers and parents, and attend conferences on education on how to deliver the best, most equitable school program and practices. And for this reason, parents who care, and I thank Lily Jessie for taking the time to go beyond her regular duties as a board member, to drive around our neighborhood to better meet the needs of our parents and kids, to attend football games, award ceremonies, town halls, community and events, events in other districts, our parent meetings, and to represent Prince William County Schools in Richmond on special committees, and to continue to learn and grow as a professional educator that she is at conferences for the betterment of everyone in our county. All these activities make her an exceptional leader and any board member, and administrator for that matter, who takes the time to do these things, a better, more informed leader for our schools. These essential actions should be valid and expected on the part of any board member, and therefore, the policy should reflect that priority through reimbursement as a fundamental part of the position for which you were elected. Thank you for your consideration when making policy decisions for board members currently and for the future.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Ms. Hurtado.
Good evening, I'm Aurora Hurtado. My address is with the board. Mr. Wilk, thank you for wearing that tie today. Good evening. I'm here as a citizen, trying to ensure that my representatives on this board represent our county families today and in the future. I'm here tonight because I don't want some local version of Betsy DeVos be the only kind of candidate we'll be able to have in the future. I want to ask the board to consider that the decisions you make today will affect other citizens, and it will affect their desire and their ability to run for these seats. It will affect the resources that they have to perform their duties. I don't think anyone on this board, or mostly anyone in education, is in this field with the expectation to become rich, but we know that we should at least expect that anyone holding this job can do it without having to incur additional financial expenses to perform his or her duties. In my previous career, I worked for a Maryland major US airline, and even though we had an office in DC, we were based from home. Every time I left my garage, my mileage was reimbursed for business expenses. So why should we expect anything different for you? I want my representative on this board to be able to drive 10 times around my neighborhood if that's what's going to result in more effective school boundaries. I want my representative on this board, and everyone on this board, to be able to go to our school science fairs, concerts, meetings. Ms. Jessie, we'll see you at the sock hop tomorrow, on Friday. You know, I want them to do that and to be there with us, but we want them to do it without it being an additional financial burden for you. If my representative on this board is assigned to a group, like a type of membership group, I want her to represent us by being there, not just by carrying a membership card, but by going to their meetings. If that shouldn't disagree with this, don't assign anyone to these groups, but don't expect to assign someone and then expect that person to not participate. As far as I know, school board members don't have, nor do I think they need, a county vehicle. But allowing them to claim reimbursement for work-related expenses should... but allowing them to claim reimbursement for work-related expenses should be a no-brainer. If for any reason someone doesn't want to claim reimbursement, thank you very much, but don't try to impose your beliefs in what affects the rest of the board. As a citizen, I am all for transparency, but access to information should be handled the way, if I want information, I can come and get it. Do not post a summary, disguised summary, but that in reality is a personal attack on someone's integrity. That's petty. It is an insult to the intelligence of your constituents, an insult to our board member, and an insult for those of us who are represented by her. In kindergarten, they will tell you, "Don't be a bully and play nice." Someone who can apply those lessons shouldn't be on this.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Mr. Mardo Isaac.
Vice Chairman Wilk, School Board and Dr. Walts, hello. I'd like to thank you all for the time and allowing me to come up here and speak today. My name is Isaac Mardo. I live at 7108 Clarkson Court in Gainesville, Virginia. I am the SCA president at Patriot High School, and I'm here to speak on the behalf of the students there. Today, I'd like to discuss two items. The first item is graduation caps. Students have come up to me and concerned that they would like to be able to decorate them. Their reasons for this are that they buy them, and that, we know that a county concern is that it's a distraction to the ceremony, that we want to be formal, but the way we see it is that we want to be unique, and it's another way to show our celebration of our, ending our public school career here in Prince William County. The second concern I'd like to bring up is that students don't know a familiar adult face at schools, especially at Patriot. They don't know, a lot of students have told me that they don't know counselors, they don't know administrators. We've thought about some things to fix these problems and resolve them within our school, but talking to other schools, we've realized it's problems theirs too. And so, the biggest solution that we could find, and we know it's a lot to ask, but building schools in a quicker manner. We know that there's a new school building near, that's being built right now near Jiffy Loop High, or Jiffy Lube, but that school's not supposed to open until 2021, and Battlefield's 50% overpopulated, Patriot right now is 38% overpopulated. So, the way it looks is that within a year or two, that school's already going to be overpopulated. I know Sasan already brought these up, but we just find a way that, we know that Loudoun, Loudoun County built two schools in one year, and that was Wood Grove and Tuscarora, Tuscarora, excuse me. They opened both those schools in one year, and it fixed a lot of their population issues. That's all I have to say today. Again, I'd like to thank you for your time and what, all the work you guys do for our students.
Thanks, Isaac. Cedric.
Hello, my name is Cedric Klyat, and I live at 4113 Yellowstone Loop, and I am the SCA president at Forest Park High School, and the topic I would like to bring up is our graduation caps. We would like the ability to decorate our graduation caps. We believe it will be a great chance to show individuality and creativity within our final days as seniors. It would be a great opportunity, since not all students would be able to do this in college, because I know a lot of different colleges allow you to decorate your graduation caps, but not everyone is going to college. And so, we want everyone to be able to partake in that experience. Also, another thing we wanted to point out was, the same thing that Isaac just mentioned, is that a lot of our students don't have a familiar adult face that they can go to, only because a lot of our guidance counselors and administrators take care of so many different students every single day, that it's hard for a student to strictly go to one person if they're having a problem, because not everyone's home situation is the same. And so, if there was some way to make that better, then that'd be great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cedric. Gabrielle.
Good evening, distinguished members of the board. My name is Gabrielle Troya. I live at 4304 Marquee Place, Woodbridge, Virginia, 22192. I'm the senior class president at Woodbridge Senior High School, and I am here to represent some of the desires of the seniors there. I would also like to address their desires to decorate graduation caps. I feel that this could be a creative release at the end of our time at Prince William County Schools. In order to retain decor, excuse me, in order to retain decorum, it could be arranged that each line leader approve cap designs in advance, similarly to parking, to painting parking spot procedures. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, that concludes citizen comment time. Moving on to item number 16, 2019 Energy Management Sustainability Program update. Mr. Mallard. This item is on for information.
Mr. Wilk, members of the board, Dr. Walts, good evening. So, tonight, we are pleased to provide the board with an update on our Energy Management and Sustainability Program. This update will be presented by Brian Gorham, Administrative Coordinator with our Energy Management Department. Brian?
Good evening, Vice Chairman Wilk, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. Like Mr. Mallard said, my name is Brian Gorham, Administrative Coordinator with the Office of Facility Services. I'll be presenting for you an update on the Prince William County Schools' Energy Management Program and Sustainability Programs. Objectives of these programs help prioritize common sense facility operation with fiscal stewardship while creating a sustainable future for Prince William County Schools. Standing here with you, I've stated before that I feel our role is to foster collaboration. This is true now more than ever, as we seek to inspire future generations to be mindful of conservation and environmental awareness. Through the cooperation with site-based management, the Office of Facility Services is developing meaningful relationships with facility users and improving the literacy of sustainability for our students. The Energy Management and Sustainability Program in Prince William County Schools is comprised of a multifaceted approach built upon stewardship and conservation. By improving the culture of sustainability through education and infrastructure, we effect change at all levels of the school division with the resounding support of staff and students. PWCS continues to develop a culture of sustainability and conservation. In school year 2019, PWCS was recognized by the Virginia School Board Association as a platinum-level award winner in the annual Go Green Virginia competition. The Virginia Energy Efficiency Council also recognized the efforts of the energy management team who are here with us tonight for success in the academic category. Had we not begun our efforts in 2012 to better manage utility spending and improve the energy awareness of staff and students, to date, we would have paid out-of-pocket an additional $34 million in utility costs. We now average an annual avoidance of utility costs in the range of $7 million a year relative to our 2011 expenditures. Almost 11,000 additional students have enrolled in PWCS since 2011, each equally deserving of a world-class education. This requires significant energy-consuming systems, such as HVAC for comfort, lighting, and information technology systems as well. Energy-efficient management practices have contributed to a reduction in energy cost per student, even with this rise in student growth, helping to offset the significant increase in enrollment. In 2011, the cost per student was $280, and in 2019, the cost per student is about $225. Just an overview of our utility expenditures. Electricity remains the largest expense of our utility category. Water and sewer falling far behind, but 13%, and natural gas, 8%. Our natural gas has increased as natural gas has become a more affordable resource for us in the heating of schools, and we've begun, over the course of years, through infrastructure improvements, to capitalize upon the use of natural gas in our boiler systems. The Office of Facility Services is very proud about trying to pioneer pathways to sustainability. We recognize that in Facility Services, we play a support role, but we also believe that we can contribute to the educational process of Prince William County Schools in a positive way. We look forward to those opportunities. All of us should take a moment to celebrate the process made to date. We have a healthy rebate program in place for schools participating in the Energy Challenge, a cycle of robust infrastructure improvements, increasing comfort, and improved operational performance of our sites. We have a network of volunteer sustainability coordinators, over 100, who meet annually together at a sustainable, sustainability summit, as organized by our energy management team, to network and to create additional pathways to sustainability. At the same time, it is imperative that we constantly set new goals and strive to broaden the impact of our efforts. Our program LED by 2023 is an aggressive effort to replace outdated lighting technology with newer systems. Color tuning, for instance, is a technology we have been researching and are currently piloting. By changing the color of the light hue in a classroom based on the activities being performed, student performance has been proven to improve. It is in line with the circadian rhythm. Yellow lights are more calming to the body. Whiter lights enhance the ability for focus and performance. It is my hope that you will support our effort to offset the negative effect carbon emissions have on the environment, and commit to working towards a 50% reduction in PWCS-produced carbon emissions by 2030 compared to what those emissions were in 2011. Your energy management team, some of whom are here tonight, continue to expand the culture of sustainability and conservation throughout the school division. We anticipate achieving greater savings and reaching more of the students and staff. And on that note, I would like to introduce you to our mascot, who was featured on a previous slide. The current will now be leading our renewed efforts in the classroom. This spring, we'll begin hosting environmentally-focused assemblies in the elementary schools. Hopefully, you have by now received some save-the-date invitations to those within your district. We hope that through these dynamic and engaging performances, we can reach more students and have some fun at the same time. Thank you. We've asked permission for this, so.
Bring it forward.
So, this is current, and current will be one of the features of our environmentally-friendly shows called Echo Hero that we will have in a variety of elementary schools, starting in April.
Look at that. Does the board have any questions? Oh, yes, get a tweet? Yes. Oh, well, we all know the board likes the pictures. Oh, is my mic on?
Well, that's kind of blocking everybody.
This is good. It's not a song, but it might work, right? Thank you all very much.
Any questions from the board? Discussion, questions? Mr. Trenna, Ms. Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Mr. Deutsch, I'm sorry. Mr. Deutsch, Mr. Trenna, Ms. Jesse.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, first of all, thank you for everything you all do. I believe this is usually about an annual presentation. It's always very exciting.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Mallard, if you got a second.
Sure.
I'm not sure I can answer these questions.
Am I correct, this might be your last meeting here?
That is correct.
So, I just want to say thank you for being willing to come back, to continue to serve, for your, the time we've spent working together this past year. It's been a lot of collaborative time, and really appreciate your service, your work, and the incredible number of years of experience before that, that's led you to be such an effective member of the team as you've come back. So, thank you, and I hope you have a fun time retiring, enjoying life, et cetera.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
So, Mr. Trenna, Ms. Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Mr. Gorham. Yep, get back up there. So, I appreciate that presentation. I was here when we first started this, so I'm glad to see it's been successful. See, it was, I guess, a few years ago when we stopped paying that other company for the other thing. That was a very happy day.
Yes, sir.
One question I have is on your, slide six on your chart, looks like for the first four, five years, we had, we had a good down slope on the, on the cost-per-student goings, and then it looks like we kind of plateaued a little the last few years. Is that, are we, are we kind of, have we kind of hit the, what we think is our best shot at that, and we've done pretty much, most of what we can, and it's due to the effort is just kind of maintaining, and you see a little bit of growth for inflation and stuff like that? Or do we think that we can continue to, we can turn that graph back down there and continue to get savings out of that? And if so, what are your ideas for?
I think there's an opportunity to decrease cost per student a little bit. Costs at the SEC have been rising with regard to electric costs. They've been approving more demand costs with association for new power plants, specifically for Dominion. So, our rates have gone up a little bit on the electric side. I think it's important to note that we stay active in the consumer side of those groups, kind of, you know, trying to advocate on behalf of school divisions and commercial enterprises as well, that those rates should remain low, that credits should be forthcoming back to, you know, even residential users. We're part of the Virginia Energy Procurement Group and the NOVAC Electronic, Electric Procurement Group. I believe those costs, they're not at equilibrium necessarily, but some of them are relative to the increased cost of utilities, so we should be mindful to monitor those.
Okay. Actually, I would suggest maybe you take a, take a, take a lesson from Mr. Wallingford, and see if you can come up next year with the same chart, except normalize it based on 2011 energy prices, so you can kind of see how we're doing comparatively like that.
Sure.
So, I think it'd be, I think it'd be a great picture. I think it'd make your slope go down even more.
Be happy you do that.
All right, thank you.
Of course.
Ms. Jesse.
You know, as a principal with, are we okay?
No, no.
Okay. This program has really moved in a very positive and big way. I just, you know, I always say the same thing every year, that I used to call it the writing in the dark money, because all the lights in the school was turned off so we could save money. But to see what has happened over the years, I'm just very, very impressed. And I'm sure you covered it in one of your slides. What type of, do we give something back to the schools for this, you know, these savings? How is that generated back to the schools?
We sure do. To date, we've returned $550,000 in rebates to the schools. It is through a program called the Energy Challenge, and we try to engage every single school in that opportunity and offer that opportunity. There are, in fact, some schools that have not taken us up on that opportunity. We still try to find other ways to help from an infrastructure standpoint, but I think it's about 77% of schools are participating in the program.
I recall that there was a group picture of those schools. How many schools, you said 70%?
About 70% of schools now participate, 77%. I did the math.
Are they primarily, are they elementary, middle, high, or?
It's wide-ranging.
A wide range?
Yeah, and social media has helped them have the opportunity to share their ideas.
Thank you very much. Thank you for saving money for us. We need all the money we can get.
Thank you for the job.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Seeing you here reminds me of last year, I think it was, where we had some students come up and, and present about finding hotspots in school buildings and things of that nature. And I'm always about integration and interdisciplinary things, ways of learning. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for our energy management program to... for our energy management program to maybe work with, maybe some of our specialty programs that kind of dabble in this. I'm thinking like environmental and sustainability, like Freedom, not necessarily that school specifically. But I know we're doing some really cool, innovative things. And I think that this program, because our students, especially at a young age, latch on to these ideas and want to see them through. And I'm wondering if there's an opportunity in the out years, definitely not tomorrow, to maybe incorporate some more student innovation and ideas and giving them a little bit more ownership of how to save some energy within their own buildings and things of that nature. And I bring that up only because I got the material home from a kindergarten who was very excited and wanted to turn off all the lights, and, which is cool. And I appreciate that. So it tells me that the program is working, but I know our, our students, as years pass, are, are taking more ownership of their academic experience. And I think that we do a very good job here in this county of providing opportunities for them to do that. And so I'm just wondering if that could be incorporated into something as we further develop this program. And I also want to thank you for your service and time and coming to make this presentation. I will be remiss in the future, whether I'm at home or up here, not listening to Mr. Trent say how happy he is that we're no longer paying that company. He was so excited last year. So I just wanted to throw that out there and say thank you again.
Yes, ma'am.
All good? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number 17, our superintendent's time, Dr. Walts.
Thank you very much, Vice Chairman Wilk, members of the board. I wanted to start off by just mentioning that our board was over at the County Board of Supervisors and presented the budget last night. I wanted to compliment Chairman Latif. It's not easy to present the entire school budget to the Board of Supervisors. It's a kind of a high-pressure thing, and I thought he did a great job. And I was really pleased that there was so much support from our board there last night. And it was a really good presentation and a lot of good conversation back and forth between the two boards and some very, very positive things stated about the school board's proposed budget to the County Board of Supervisors. So I'm very optimistic about the outcome of that. I recently attended the Family STEM Evening at Henderson Elementary School. It was Henderson's Sixth Family STEM Evening, and the school is very excited about the increase in the number of participants over the last six years. Attendance has grown from 75 in year one to 326 this year, with 50 military-connected families attending. And speaking of the military, April is the month of the military child. Purple Up Day is April 10th. I've got my purple ties between battlefield and the military. I've got several now. I encourage everyone to wear purple to support our military families. I see a few gentlemen out there that I believe wear purple for a certain fraternity as well, so that works for, for that as well. It's been a very busy couple of weeks, giving me a chance to see so many of our talented students and staff who work with them. First, the Prince William and Assis Regional Science Fair for the middle and high school students was held on March 23rd. Our students contributed more than 240 projects to this year's fair. The high school grand prize winners were Zachary Nowak, Ethan Sari, George French, and Zane Van Der Eer, all from the governor's school. At the middle school level, Tony Bright, Hamza Latif, and Gabriel Ralston of Benton Middle School took the grand prize honors. Congratulations to all the winners. I also attended three outstanding theatrical presentations, including Into the Woods Junior by the Parkside Middle School Players, Suzical the Musical at Brentsville District High School, starring, among other leads, was our own school board alternative member, a student member, Annabelle Bergeron, who played the lead, the cat in the hat. And she was amazing. I didn't know she had all that additional talent. And then Mamma Mia at Colgan High School. And I did have a daughter, Delaney, in that production. It was great. I was so impressed with the talent of our students and staff. All three productions were fantastic. Bravo to Parkside Middle, Brentsville High, and Colgan High. Our schools have been very busy celebrating their school of excellence status. I recently attended the School of Excellence Ceremonies for Battlefield High School, Buckman Mills Elementary School, and congratulations to both of them for their academic honors. Last week, I had the honor of attending the celebration to recognize a number of Battlefield High School students for their published writing. The students recited excerpts from their stories and then signed autographs in an actual published book. Congratulations to teacher Jamie Marsh, who coordinated the event. Last Thursday, I visited Forest Park High School to cheer on the athletes participating in the Second Annual United Track and Field Event. And before, and I did that just before visiting St. Clair Elementary School to celebrate their 50th anniversary. Kudos to all the athletes and congratulations to St. Clair on 50 years. Speaking of a lot of years, Wayne Mallard. Mr. Mallard, AKA Duck, AKA Wayne, AKA The Wayne, AKA The Wayne Factor. This is his last meeting. You may wonder why all of those names. I'll just have to say that Mr. Mallard came in to help us out as interim Associate Superintendent for Support Services. He was the number-one most helpful person when I came here in 2005. He had been on the key leadership staff of my predecessor, Dr. Edward Kelly, who served for 18 years. And Mr. Mallard was immeasurably helpful in my transition, helping me to understand the school division, our specialty schools, you name it. He, he was there to help me understand it. To bring him back after several years of retirement was my pleasure and was immense help to the school division because he knows how the school division works, and he's gotten all those nicknames because he is able to solve extraordinarily complex issues like nobody I think I've ever worked with. And so every one of those names, when we finally figured out how to do the double gyms at, we're doing that at Woodbridge, and we're doing that at Garfield. And originally, it looked like that was going to be next to impossible to do. You give Wayne a challenging job, and that man will figure out a solution by an unbelievable way of working collaboratively with people. He works with the community, he works with our school board, he works with staff and students in a way that has done amazing, amazingly great things. And he was also a paramount player in developing this year's budget. I'd like to just give a round of applause to Mr. Mallard. And I do know how to reach you, so there may be another little project or two when you're back from your vacation. Before closing tonight, I just wanted to show again about a one-minute video on our Sea Perch Robotics Experience. Had a great time seeing all the teams, so sit back for the last minute. Go. It's pretty cool to have a pool. We used to practice in horse tanks.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. Okay, moving on to board matters. 1801, report to the school board on the Joint County CIP Committee. This item is up for information. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk, and my fellow CIP committee members. If you have any other additional insights, feel free to jump in. Pretty much, our last meeting, we were discussing the topic of communication and public outreach, the differences between the school system and the county government, especially with regards to when the school system undergoes construction at schools, whether it be building new schools, additions, any renovations of those sorts. The idea is so that we could better facilitate communication to the public, and so that information, it comes from the school division to the county government, because they have additional resources sometimes that the school system does not have. They usually have access to members of the public who may not have students represented in the county, but may also live in an area that is affected by the upcoming construction. So there was a lot of discussion on that. There was a document produced, which is, should be published on the website, that lists the different methods of outreach that both the county and the school system undertake when these projects occur. In addition, we discussed a little bit more about how we would, I guess you could say, to bring, well, we talked about the funding for the supplemental $1.74 million trailer removal and what that entails and what that looks like and why it's an important discussion to keep having. No decision was made at the time. We decided to table that to our next meeting in May. I don't know if Mr. Trenum or Ms. Jessie have any further comments.
The, the one, the millions of dollars for trailers was an item of discussion. At the end of the day, you don't just park a trailer, you don't get rid of a trailer. In order to remove trailers, we really need, it comes back to building. And we have land acquisition problems, especially on the eastern end. We're trying to address that. We're looking at more, better ways of using land, land usage. For example, that Aquaquan, which I'm pleased to say has been moved up. We are looking at ways to help to build on that property. And I, I just want to give a shout out to Wayne Mallard, because he helped me with that. He said, "Don't worry, I'm going to get that building on that property." And we have property there, but on the eastern end, we just don't have the properties. And we really need the additional structures. We need, the Board of Supervisors was asking us what we were going to do. So I looked at them and said, "You're the revenue source. What are you going to do?" You know, the board, we wait for the school, the Board of Supervisors to provide us with the money. This board has been very interesting. I think we've learned a lot about how each side works. But at the end of the day, we really like to get something constructive done. So I'm anxious to see what's going to happen when I think Mr. Klein is going to come to the next meeting and make a presentation. So I think that it has been a really worthy project. And I don't know if Mr. Trenum, Mr. Trenum, would you like to add more? The three of us are on that board.
Sure. I think, just to follow on, I think it's been a very worthwhile effort. I mean, I've only been doing it a year, Mr. Brand, when I was gone. Mr. Brand was Brentsville, who represented in the seat. So, so he had the first half of the experience. But I think it's been very helpful in that it's, I think it's helped the participating members on both boards to better understand how the other board operates and what their concerns are. One of the things about, with regards to the supplemental CIP is one of the things we talked about is, we've got a, we came up with a plan. One of the, one of our original goals was to come up with a plan. Well, we came up with a plan, and now the next step is, you know, how do you fund it and who, and are we going to fund it? And how do we fund it? And from my perspective, that's, you know, it's our turn to turn that over to Board of County Supervisors and say, "Here's the plan." So that's, that's the next step. And then it'll be a discussion as far as where it goes from there between both boards. One thing to keep in mind, I think people need to be aware of, is the Joint CIP Committee, we have, it's a, it's, we, we do a lot of communication, information sharing, and we, we can provide directive to the staff within the, within the constraints of the mission of the CIP, the Joint CIP Committee. But what we can't do is, one, we can't obligate either board to a specific course of action. So if the CIP Committee thinks there's a great idea for the school board to come back and do, we can't commit the school board to do that. That has to come back here for the entire board. And same on the Board of County Supervisor's side. If the Joint Committee thinks something's a great idea, they still have to take it back to the Board of County Supervisors, and they have to engage on it as a board. So that's all I have.
Ms. Williams.
I'd like to add one more thing to that. Also, we were remiss, we had a new member to the committee on the Board of County Supervisor's side. That was Mr. Marty Noe, who joined us. So I just wanted to welcome him publicly to the committee. And again, just to restate how extremely helpful and instrumental this committee has really been. There were times where the two systems were kind of competing against each other in a way without even knowing. And a lot of that has disappeared. And it's just really an honor to be able to have our staff and the county staff really work together to achieving this goal and not be competitive. And I can't stress how much of a benefit that is for all of us in the community. So I just want to thank our staff on both sides and for, for my other members for serving on this, because it is, it is an additional time constraint. Sometimes we meet at 7:30 in the morning. Sometimes we, sometimes we meet in the evening. But a lot of good work has come from that.
Okay. Thank you all. Moving on to 1802, updated report to the school board on the Office of the Ombudsman. This is up for information from Mr. Trenum and Ms. Williams.
I think we can turn it over to our lovely Ms. Mary McGowan.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Wilk, members of the board, Dr. Latif, not here, excuse me, Dr. Wilk, Dr. Walts. I've been asked to give you a little update on the status of the Ombudsman's office. And if Dr. Latif were here, he'd be happy, because it's only three slides. So the committee met again in February, following our January presentation to the school board. And at that time, we reviewed and made some improvements and edits to a proposed new school board policy, 180, Office of the Ombudsman, which is also on tonight's agenda for first reading. We did a little additional benchmarking for next steps to develop a job description, a rubric, and a hiring process for the ombudsman. The job description has been developed and finalized and approved under the regulation that, that cited up here for employee job descriptions. On March 20th, the proposed budget was approved at markup, which included the superintendent's recommended funding for additional support for the, for resources for the ombudsman's position. So then we have next steps. April 24th, the next school board meeting, the policy for the ombuds office is on for second reading. I encourage any board members that have any suggested edits or additions to that policy to get them to my office prior to then. The ombudsman's position will then be in a position to be posted, both through the usual processes here at, at the, at the division and also nationally through the International Ombudsmen's Association and the United States Ombudsmen's Association, which should allow us to attract candidates from around the country. A rubric is in the process of being developed to utilize when the qualifications of the various applicants are assessed. We recommend an interview panel that will be comprised of the members of the committee, Mr. Williams, Ms. Williams, Mr. Trenum, Dr. Latif, myself, Amy White, and the superintendent's designee. And that interview panel will convene using the usual employment processes here in the division, in which the resumes will be reviewed, the rubric will be used to identify the most qualified candidates, and then panel interviews will be conducted and recommendations hopefully presented to the school board before the end of the school year. If that were to happen, then that would leave the summer of 2019 for the ombudsman to be, get oriented here within the division. If, if the ombuds person needs additional training, that could be arranged. And then we could also begin the public outreach program in order to let the school community know about the services that the ombudsman uses and how to reach that person once they're in office. So that's where we are. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer them.
Ms. Jessie.
On your interview panel, this position, I'm, I'm really happy to see this position. I think it's, it provides for teachers and other staff members a sense of having someone a step where they can have someone advocate or present their concerns to someone other than, quote, quote, the superintendent's staff or those designated by him. But in your interview panel, had, did you consider having teachers on that interview panel or representatives from maybe PWA on that panel?
We did not.
Could you consider that?
I'm glad that the committee can certainly review that at our next meeting.
I would, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to mention, I think I saw Mr. Trenum's head shaking in agreement. That's part of the reason we're here tonight, is so that we can hear these other additional suggestions. And I'm sure Mr. Trenum, like myself, will take them very seriously.
Ms. Ralston?
Thank you. Who is going to be, and if someone is over the ombudsman? Where does the ombudsman go when this person says, "Well, we're at a standoff on each side"? Where and who do they turn to then?
Well, the ombudsman reports both to the superintendent and to the board. So that, much like my office, we have two directions to go, to see to resolve an impasse like that, should that occur. But I think that the ombudsmens are trained to try to, try to maximize, exhaust all avenues for resolution. So I, and it's my understanding that sometimes they, they aren't able to reach a resolution. But the majority of complaints, they're able to take care of those concerns.
Because they should not be working for either side.
No, they're neutral. Yes.
Dr. Walts?
So I think I may have mentioned this once before, that I did have an opportunity to work in two, two school divisions that had very successful ombuds people. They were very highly effective. Generally, what happens is, most of the things that they deal with, if you have the right person in the job, they're able to facilitate what needs to be done, connecting people to the right places, showing them the right procedures, working through some things at a lower level. Where the superintendent comes into play is, if there's something that they need through some part of the school division where they need access to somebody, or they need someone's assistance with a sense of urgency. What has happened in these other school divisions is the superintendent facilitates that like on a dime. So, so it's very helpful in terms of expediting sometimes when people may need a little bit of help in navigating a very big school division.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other? Good? Okay. Item 1803, proposed policy 180, Office of the Ombudsman. First reading, this is up, brought forward by Mr. Trenum and Ms. Williams, and this item is on for information. Let's, Mr. Trenum?
I don't have any specific comments about it. Like I said, I've already, I read it. I just encourage, like Ms. McGowan said, encourage the other board members to read it. If you have any issues or concerns, by all means, bring them to Ms. McGowan, you can bring them to Ms. Williams and myself as well. It's a little bit longer than our normal policies. I think that's okay, because it, because it's about a school board issue, and so we have to get more in-depth about some of these things. So, but other than that, I think it's a great, a very good, good starting point.
Good, good. Okay. Oh, Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, sorry. I understand it is long, we've got this in front of us, but also the public's going to be watching. Is it possible for possibly our attorney just to walk us through the main components of this, what it does, why some things may be key, et cetera?
Happy to do that. Let me just say, as a preliminary matter, that we, before putting this policy together, we looked at a number of policies from around the country, particularly at ombudsman policies that were unique to educational institutions. And we came away with a lot of good ideas. I mean, the first part of it is really devoted towards explaining to the public what the role of the ombudsman is, relative to the processing of complaints, resolution of complaints, directing the, the public, or students, and members of the school community to existing policies and procedures, helping them navigate the, the red tape, if you will, on our existing procedures. Not that there's any red tape, just that sometimes there are, there are conflicting processes that are confusing to people. And then also, we talk a little bit about how the purpose of the ombudsman is also to gather data and analyze that data, while still preserving the confidentiality of individual complainants, so that he or she can come away with recommendations for systemic changes. For example, if there's a recurring problem in one department, recurring complaints, and the ombudsman identifies perhaps an institutional issue that could resolve that, he or she can bring that to the superintendent or to the board for correction. We, the second section of the policy deals with the authority and independence, the required independence of the ombudsman, and talks about the, essentially, the, the core values of an ombudsman, which are borrowed from the two national organizations that govern the procedures and the values, if you will, of an ombudsman. Then we also talk about the standards of practice. And so the standards of practice really revolve around those core values, the first one of which is confidentiality. And we talk about the degree to which the ombudsman will strive to keep confidentiality on individual concerns, and the situations in which he or she may not be able to maintain that confidentiality, which are limited. We talk about the core value of neutrality and partiality, which I referenced a little bit earlier in response to a question from a board member. Also, the, we have a section here on access to legal counsel. And that's necessary because there are many policies and procedures already in place that are driven by law, such as our employee grievance process, such as our Title IX sexual harassment practice policy, such as many other federally, federal and state nondiscrimination statutes that require us to have procedures for immediate investigation of complaints and resolution. So the ombudsman will have to work in conjunction with my office to make sure that any complaints that fall under, in the scope of those legal procedures are also dealt with appropriately. We have a section in here, a legalese notice to the school board. This is simply put in here to avoid having the ombudsman tagged with official notice of a complaint for legal purposes, when that official notice is actually required to be delivered elsewhere in the division. We talk about complaints involving individual employees, and the ombudsman's role relative to assisting employees to navigate our existing procedures. Also, there's a provision in here about ongoing internal audit, division counsel, risk management, special education, or other formal investigations. If these legal proceedings are going on, then the ombudsman will, will not be involved in those for obvious reasons. And finally, we talk about the data collection and reporting role that the ombudsman plays, which is very important, because over the year, he or she will be able to, as I said earlier, compile data and analyze concerns, and bring those directly to the board in an annual report at the end of the year, talking about his or her recommendations for improvement within the system. In addition, on a quarterly basis, the ombudsman will be reporting to the board on the nature and number of concerns that his or her office is handling. So we tried to incorporate all this here. It is a little long, but remember, we don't have regulations anymore in, in the 100 series, and this is, is a board policy. So that's why we covered all of those bases in here. We anticipate that after the ombudsman is in place, that with the assistance of the ombudsman, the division will be able to develop more specific guidelines, like you might typically see in a regulation governing his or her office, and the procedures for filing complaints and things of that nature.
Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you. Couple, couple additional questions, maybe falls under the policy, maybe falls under the presentation right before. But are we, there's, we're going to get presentations from the ombudsmen. Are some of those going to be closed session, some public, or are they all open session? Or is there?
It would totally depend upon the nature of his or her report, and whether or not it falls within one of the exemptions to the Freedom of Information Act.
Okay. And then, who does the annual reviews for the ombudsman? Have we contemplated that, or?
We have not. That's probably another good question for the committee.
You're good, Mr. Deutsch. Mr. Trenum?
Thank you. I just want to follow up on Mr. Deutsch's last question. We haven't determined that yet, but we have discussed it. And one of the things that we've discussed is handling it, much like the division attorneys, is that the, the assessment would be performed by the school board, signed by the, by the chairman with the input of the superintendent.
Dan, something like that makes a lot of sense.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Ms. McGowan. Okay, item 1804, the proposed amendment to policy 115, compensation and reimbursement of school board members. This is our second reading. Because there's people trying to read the attachment right now, and I don't think people, This item is on for action. The motion is in order. okay, thank you, the vote is gone now.
Mr. Chairman? Thanks.
Thank you. For the, everyone out there watching, there was a pop-up window of the vote, and you couldn't look at the attachment without the pop-up window.
Mr. Wilk, if we could take a brief recess, I believe we can get a color-coded version
I believe it matches the attachment in board docs.
of it to hand out to the board members.
We haven't had, where is the discussion?
Yeah, I think that's going to be needed for this. I think, do I have to do a motion to take a brief recess, or is that chairman's prerogative?
Why are we voting? We haven't had a discussion.
I think we're going to take a five-minute recess on this one, so we're going to be I think we'll go to discuss, I just want to make sure, we'll definitely go to discussion next. back in five minutes at 8:55.
Okay. Because I see, I see a vote on the screen.
Thank you.[1258.08] Yeah, the vote on the screen.
of employees. And I would also like to have a discussion about the other item, another item that's very personal. I think Ms. McGowan, you have provided that revision.
The board clerk has a revised, an amended motion for Ms. Jessie that if, that she would like to have read, she would like to have added. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
Someone, we have to make the motion. Are you making the motion, Ms. Jessie?
Yeah. I move that we accept the amended version as provided by the clerks.
Okay, it does need a second.
A second.
Now, we're on to discussion.
Can we get a copy of this amendment text?
She's gonna bring it up. While we're waiting for the, okay, here we go.
I'm sorry, what, I'm what?
Are we at the F5?
So, refresh, F5, guys? Thank you.
Refresh.
So, will this new one be in the attachment under the area, or is?
It's in the attachment. The motion itself, I think it was the difference, the wording that we see versus what's up there.
I'm sorry, for clarity, if I'm understanding correctly, this is just the motion Ms. Jessie asked for, and which is different than the motion that's currently on board docs that we are seeing, that, correct?
Correct. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. McGowan.
So, what Ms. Jessie is doing, this is, this is her, a new proposed amendment to policy 115. It's not an amendment to a pending motion. This is the main motion that she is suggesting.
So, I'm, just for clarification, so what just popped up on our screen, is this to have a change before we vote on what the motion, are we actually?
This is the main motion on the, on the second reading.
The text that we see on board docs is not the same text that's on the screen right here.
Correct. It is, it is a different motion. But the, what the text that was originally on board docs was the original suggested motion. Ms. Jessie has a different motion tonight. So, it's not a motion to amend that motion. It's a motion to amend policy 115. It's the main motion before the board.
Okay, this happened pretty fast. So, can we give everyone a chance to look at this, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I believe it matches the attachment in board docs.
We haven't had, where is the discussion? Why are we, we haven't had a discussion?
I think we'll go to discuss, I just want to make sure, we'll definitely go to discussion next.
Okay. Because I see, I see a vote on the screen.
Yeah, the vote on the screen. Is there any way to take the vote off and then do it again? Because there's people trying to read the attachment right now, and I don't think people, okay, thank you, the vote is gone now.
Thanks.
Thank you. Everyone out there watching, there was a pop-up window of the vote, and you couldn't look at the attachment without the pop-up window.
Mr. Wilk, if we could take a brief recess, I believe we can get a color-coded
Yeah, I think that's going to be needed for this. I think, do I have to do a motion to take a brief recess, or is that chairman's prerogative? I think we're gonna take a five-minute recess on this one, so we're gonna be back in five minutes at 8:55. Thank you. Yeah. Ms. William, I'm sorry. Is Mr. Trenum here? There he is. Oh, okay, there you are. Okay, we're gonna get started. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna get back to this. We're at 8:57, two minutes a little past when I thought we were gonna do. So, just to clarify things, I'm gonna read the motion now that is at hand before we move to discussion. So, the motion now, as we've been provided, is, "I move that the Prince William County School Board adopt the following revisions to policy 115, compensation and reimbursement of school board members. Amend the second paragraph in First Bullet of Policy 115 to read the following. The school board members may be reimbursed for expenses related to their performance of their official duties and attendance at PWC events in accordance with law and with the policies and regulations governing reimbursement for employees, including Regulation 382.01-1, employee reimbursement. Expenses relating to their official duties for which school board members may be reimbursed or which will be paid directly by PWCS, including the following. Mileage to and from their home, offices to attend school board functions and activities, including local board meetings, or to carry out their official duties and mileage between locations where members are carrying out their official duties and attendance at local, state, and national programs, providing educational professional development activities for school boards." Did I get that right, Ms. Jessie? Thank you. Okay. So, we had the motion. Ms. Williams, did you second, who second? We had the second. So, now we are going to move on to discussion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Satterwhite.
I move the previous question.
Okay. Okay, now, we need a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Deutsch, seconds. There is no debate on this motion. Does Ms. Satterwhite get to talk, or no?
No, there's no debate on the motion. It's a motion to cut off discussion and call the vote. This is what, essentially what this vote is.
So, to cut off vote without any discussion on the matter?
Basically, to call the vote as, and with no further discussion.
Okay, so, we're gonna, we're voting, to just eliminate discussion and go right to a vote. Do we have to write this down? Well, the old guy used to make us.
The clerk needs to add that motion to.
Okay.
You're now voting on the motion, the motion on the previous question.
So, just for clarification again, Ms. McGowan, you say it again before the other members vote, by voting for or against, what are we voting on?
This motion is, is commonly called a motion to call the question. It is a motion to cut off debate in order to move directly to a vote without debate on the previous question. You're now voting on the motion on the previous question.
So, if this passes, Ms. Jessie, then there will be no discussion, and the board will move right to voting on your amendment.
I'm just reading what's on my screen.
Yes.
So, explain to me verbally again.
If I vote yes?
If you vote yes, Ms. Jessie, my understanding, Ms. McGowan, correct me, that means you would not, or anyone would not get to have a discussion before we go to vote on your amendment. By voting no, we would be saying, yes, we will have a period of discussion before we vote on your amendment. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Good first night for this.
Correct. If you vote no, you're saying that we should have a discussion. If you vote yes, you're saying no discussion, go right to the votes on your amendments.
Who are we still waiting? I'm sorry, I apologize. Ms. Ralston. Mr. Trenum. Has everyone voted?
The vote is three yes and three no. Motion failed.
Who?
Four.
Can we get a roll call? Who, wait, I'm sorry.
Four yes and three no.
Four yes. Can you read the roll? Who voted, please?
Mr. Deutsch voted yes, Ms. Jessie voted no, Ms. Ralston voted yes, Ms. Satterwhite voted yes, Mr. Trenum voted yes, Mr. Wilk voted no, Ms. Williams voted no.
So, that is four yes, three. Does that need just a simple majority to move to previous question, Ms. McGowan?
No, it needs two-thirds. It needs five votes to pass.
Okay, so, then it fails, so we will now move to discussion. Okay, Ms. Jessie, it's your amendment. You may start the discussion.
I have a two-part discussion. One part has to do with what has taken place, and what has seen taking place tonight. And the other has to do with the amendment itself. I just find it, please be patient with me on this, because I called for this vote because someone has to deal with what's going on here. For me, it's a correction of misrepresentation of facts when it comes to my personal conduct as a member of this school board. For six years, I've endured social media attacks that even sometimes were racist. I've said nothing. Most recently, I've been accused of stealing public funds without accurate facts to support those allegations. I grew up in a family of domestic workers and was trained at an early age that if anything went missing in a home, that I would be first, the first to be blamed. I've given this school division in this county more than 40 years of honest and dedicated service. I have a stellar international record of commendable service. As a principal, I work at least 60 hours a week, to include Sundays. I took time away from my family, gave back my annual leave, travel, and sick leave, but I will not give anyone my integrity. As a central office supervisor and principal, at no time did I misuse funds or make requests that even came close to being inappropriate. As for people who want me to volunteer, we need more volunteers, I volunteered my service to this school division and to this community for over 30 years with the MLK Martin Luther King Youth Oratorical. I was elected, not appointed, to this board and provided little guidance or support. Betty Covington was the only board member to provide any of that. In fact, I was so concerned about the lack of board orientation that Betty and I set up a special training session for Ms. Williams, with the permission of the board chair. Which brings me to my travel reimbursement. I received no guidance as to what I had done as a principal, I received no guidance, so I did what I had done as a principal, which was to seek reimbursement once I left my office, which is my home. And I brought for the audience a copy of our directory. School board members are the only persons in this directory with their home address listed, because that is our official office. My leadership style, I've always been a get in your car and go directly to the problem. I also believe in a high level of visibility. I drove and walked the streets during the boundary hearings. I visited schools. That's how I knew firsthand that Aquaquan had enough land to build a school. I met with parents, PTA, and other community leaders. I attended football games, walked the fields of Woodbridge High. I saw the holes in the field, thus to fight for a turf field. I planned to attend nine School of Excellence events and eight graduations, which I've done ever since I have been on this board. Anacceracies I want on the public record, in the presentation, and are stated, published by certain board members. On page two, our, in this, the regulation, I have to read the number again, I'm sorry, It says, "Local travel, the usual place of work to and from additional work location." These are the anacceracies. It has been said on social media that I benefit myself financially. I received an average of $198 a month in travel, not 1,000, as people have said. My daughter Jennifer is a comedian in the house, so she said, "Mom, when are we gonna go on that reimbursement vacation? You're getting all this money." Not official board, not official board function. And on January 2nd, this board voted to, and I was appointed by the chairman to the National Association of Black Educators for the sixth time. This in spite of my reminding each board chair every time that there was no local chapter like the one developed when Dr. Waltz became superintendent. So, I finally decided I would go to the national meeting since I was appointed to the National Association of Black Educators. The other era, there's been these slides that say that other jurisdictions do not seek reimbursement for travel. Yes, they do. At the National School Board Association, we met with, I met with members of Fairfax School Board who personally verified that they, in fact, do collect travel. So, these decisions were made with incorrect information. Also, not an accuracy problem, but please make note that the board supervisors receive and request travel reimbursement and have executive assistants to submit it. I was a question about why could I return this item to an agenda? I learned this from, during the George Hampton naming, that members of this board return items to an agenda. If you vote for something, you can come back and bring it back to the agenda, and I did. In closing, I have no problems with other members of this board not seeking reimbursement, but in my mind, you do not have the right to take away my right or the right of other board members to receive what is due to them. You do not have the right to be their morality barometer. They may actually need the support to actively support their constituencies. This was never meant to be a volunteer job, and no one should bear the guilt for asking for reimbursement. Mr. Wayne Mallot is here tonight, and he was my associate superintendent when I was a principal, and he probably doesn't remember, remember it, but I remember it. A parent accused me of something, I don't recall what it was, and Wayne Mallot sat at the table and said the following. "That doesn't sound like Mrs. Jessie." Using money that is not my money does not sound like me, and I will not allow anyone to defame me. If you want to take away travel from me, because I travel a lot, I know some of you don't travel as much as I do because you work, but I am a visible person, I will continue to travel. My husband gave the stats of 9,000 miles, and that's just local. Now, getting to the amendment. I don't know if, when, the last time we talked, I know that Mrs. Satterwhite was concerned about official duties. I consider the fact that I was assigned to the National Association of Black Educators official. I consider the fact that I went to a professional learning community conference official, because it is a countywide program. As I look at official duties, and you ask for a definition, and I'm hoping that this revision will satisfy that for you. I see four categories. Ceremonial, we're often asked to attend official, we have official duties at school board by attending events. Although many are not ceremonial in nature, our appearance boosts the morale and pride for the school division. Betty Covington and I have been friends for years. Mrs. Bunch, who's one of my staff member, and Ms. Burris is in the audience, and they will remember, if no one came from central office, Betty came, and it was not even her area. So, when she took me under her wings, I appreciated it. The, this interpretation is an expectation for all of us. They expect us to be there, and I plan to be there. On the Section 2 of 382.01-1, Paragraph B, Subparagraph 4 states, "Mileage reimbursement is authorized when such services shall be considered to be, to include and representation of the school board." Official duties, attendance at conferences or seminars. Official duties, attendance at conferences or seminars associated with members of assigned subcommittees. Those associated with, I would include, the strategic plan or countywide initiative, and that have been approved by the chair. I went on no trip without chair knowing. Three, attendance at meetings where the school board member has been appointed by a national or state official. I was appointed by the governor to be on the SOL Innovation Committee. I went to Richmond. I was appointed recently by the Challenging School Committee. I will be going to Charlottesville. Finally, number four, under official, and I hope this will help you with your concern, are site visits. We went to Roanoke with, I think it was Rita and Rita Goss and Jarisland. We went on a site visit to look at this whole equity. We went to the national conference. Everything is about equity. So this is my rationale for making this amendment. I hope it fulfills the concern that members of the board have. But for me, my main reason for putting it on the agenda is my name. You don't mess with my name. So that's it for me.
Okay. I don't want to, so what I'd like to do is make sure everyone in round one, I guess, of the discussion has a chance to talk if they so choose. If a person is addressed by name, I think that person should have the courtesy to respond in place of someone going there first to finish that out. But to start with, thank you, Ms. Jesse. Ms. Satterwhite, your name was referenced. Would you like to respond or start your comments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. You know, Ms. Jesse, you just mentioned your last comment was my main reason for putting this in the agenda is my name. And you first put this on the agenda back in January, January 16th, 2019. We had, as you said too, I think there are a lot of misconceptions and misunderstandings surrounding Policy 115 on reimbursements and what has occurred on this board. And I also want to make sure everybody's on the same page with the facts. As part of the revision of the 100 series of school board policy, the revision of Policy 115 was introduced to the school board for information on September 19th, and again on September 3rd, and the school board wasn't ready to vote then. And again, on October 17th, the school board passed a significantly revised Policy 115 on reimbursements, with every single member of the school board present and voting in favor. It passed eight to zero. And I encourage you to read that policy for yourself and see what's covered in it. Under the approved policy, it covers mileage to and from official school board functions and activities outside of members' districts other than local school board meetings, including attendance at local, state, and national programs providing educational and professional development activities for school boards, other transportation costs associated with the school board members' attendance at such activities, and that goes on, lodging, reimbursement for accommodations for overnight travel associated with the school board members' attendance at such programs, and that goes on, meals for working meetings related to official school board business and/or associated with approved travel, work-related supplies and materials necessary for a school board member to carry out the business of the school board, internet and related technology fees when necessary for the school board member to communicate with others for the business of the school board, and it goes on. So I think there's a misunderstanding. From the comments I heard from citizens, it seemed like there were people who seemed to think that there were no reimbursements for school board members, and that is not the case. Reimboursements are accommodated for in the current policy, and the current policy does reference Regulation 382.01-1 Employee Reimbursement. So like I said, the school board considered that policy over three meetings last fall, just last fall. On January 16th, the entire school board was sent the travel reimbursement requests that had been submitted from all school board members since January 2016. This information is not private information, as was alleged an information that went out to the public. This is not private information. This is public record, it's available by Freedom of Information Request. We're elected officials. In that capacity, we're subject to Virginia FOIA laws. Members of this board have all been briefed on those FOIA laws. Under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3700, Section B, it says, "The affairs of government are not intended to be conducted in an atmosphere of secrecy." And then it goes on to say, "All public records shall be available for inspection and copying upon request." So to imply, in some of the documents that went out, to imply that anyone's records were seized is a misunderstanding of Virginia FOIA laws. The records are public record. So there is an amendment, a proposed amendment to Policy 115 added to the agenda for the January 16th meeting by Mrs. Jesse for information. Mrs. Jesse putting that on the agenda had nothing to do with me, it had nothing to do with Mr. Deutsch, we had not weighed in on anything to do with the policy amendment. Typically, the board will hear a policy for information at one meeting and then action for next. Due to a very long night that night with the boundary change, the agenda item was moved to the next meeting. And then on February 6th, the proposed amendment was submitted for information. On March 6th, the board considered Ms. Jesse's proposed amendment to Policy 115. And again, note, I did not bring this forward to the board, and I didn't begin this conversation. Mrs. Jesse did. I had already voted yes to our amended policy that we did back in the fall. When I spoke on this agenda item at the March 6th meeting, I spoke to my concerns about changing the policy further. I never mentioned a board member by name, on purpose, I never did that. I never discussed this issue on social media since then. I never mentioned anyone's integrity, I never questioned anyone's integrity, because of course I didn't mention a specific person. Since that meeting, Mrs. Jesse wrote an editorial that was published on her Facebook page and online news outlets, it was attacking me and another board member. Mrs. Jesse sent out two call-to-action emails to Democrats in Prince William County. It was an attempt to turn Prince William County's school board policy into a hypercharged and highly partisan issue. There is nothing about a reimbursement policy that is a Democrat or Republican issue. This is simply a matter of good governance. On March 6th, I mentioned my concern about reimbursement claims for events that were not official school board functions. While I have no doubt that these are great activities, and yes, they revolve around education, but there are some things, and not all of them, most of what Ms. Jesse has on her list are education functions, and most of them are Prince William County school functions. But there are a few activities that are on there that are not official school board functions, and that was one of my concerns about changing the wording. And I was criticized, in one of those documents that went out to the public, I was criticized for not giving context at the meeting. I purposely didn't give context in the March 6th meeting, I kept my comments very generic, I didn't mention a board member name, I kept my comments very even and very professional. Since then, my name has been blasted and tossed around in the public, and I don't appreciate that, because what should have been a simple policy change has become politically charged and ugly. I'm going to talk about specifics. There was a reimbursement request for Hilton Chapel for the Renee Lacy concert, that was not an official school event. We all love Renee Lacy, she's a wonderful lady, and we all miss her, but it was not an official school event for Prince William County schools. On another page, and these are the official reimbursement forms. Mount Zion Baptist Church Renee Lacy Celebration, and the next day, Mount Zion Baptist Church Renee Lacy Funeral. Those were not official school board functions, and they were asked for reimbursement for Hilton Performing Arts, the Future Kings Gala, PTO Office, Alexandria, Black History Panelist, I'm sure those are fabulous events, but they were not official Prince William County Schools functions, where money should be coming out of our taxpayer funds for Prince William County Schools to pay for the events. All Saints Catholic Church, Senator Colgan's funeral, VFW Post 1503, Dale City Civic Association Those are some examples of things that are not official school board functions that were claimed for mileage. And in my opinion, those are things that should not be in there. So when the policy was changed, back in, excuse me, when the policy was changed back in the fall, mileage to and from official school board functions and activities outside of members' district other than local school board meetings, there were members who voted on that for a reason. We're paid as school board members to do the business of the board, and you know, quite frankly, many of us realize it's public service, because we put in over and above anything that we can get and pay, because we work very hard. And as Ms. Jesse said, there are many of us who work very, very hard and travel all over the place in the county to visit our schools, because we're very passionate about what we do. But we are paid for doing the job, and one of our jobs is coming to school board meetings. And it's the opinion of some of us, it's the opinion of me on the board, and I think some of my fellow board members share this too, that coming to a school board meeting is your job. Attending events in your district is your job. And Ms. Jesse has many, many claims on here for things that are outside of her district that are part of being a school board member. I don't have a problem with that, at all. But the reason this was changed and refined was to narrow down the scope of what we do as a school board. As to the conferences, when we had our school board training in Charlottesville a couple years ago, the VSBA, one of the VSBA leadership, when asked, told us that the only continuing education credits that count toward our legally required school board training are those conferences offered by VSBA and NSBA. My only concern about attending conferences outside of that, with what happened with Mrs. Jesse's case, those conferences she attended were approved by a former chairman, they weren't approved by the school board. My only concern about that, Ms. Jesse, is it should be approved by the school board, not just one person, because we act as a body corporate as a school board. That's our job. That's the power we have as school board members, is to act as a body corporate. Again, I did not bring the subject of amending Policy 115 to this board, Mrs. Jesse did. I continue to work hard that we are spending, to make sure we're spending our taxpayer money, your money responsibly. And that's why I brought up my concerns. Again, I did not mention purposely anyone's name on March 6th, and I kept my comments very generic. I felt it important, as this policy change was once again added to the agenda for action tonight, in light of the recent editorials and attacks, to make sure that the facts were established. This is not an issue of questioning anyone's integrity, it's a question of judgment on some of the claims that have been put forward, and it's up to the board to decide what to do with it now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Jesse, you were addressed a couple times in there, would you like to respond? Or can we?
She wants to respond, then I'll respond.
Well, Ms. Williams, can you also, with your response, make this round one of the discussion, please?
Then I'll come back.
I'm sure, yes.
No, after she responds, I'd like to.
Okay.
Thank you. So I find it really, let me start by saying that I've been on this board, and the very first year that I was on this board, one of my major movements was to call back a resolution that this board had voted on, that we overstepped our boundaries in voting for when Mr. Johns was chairman. So I do very much believe that it is an absolute right for a board member, any board member, if they see something that needs to be addressed after a vote is taken, to be able to do so. I'm also very disturbed, because what the purpose of this is, is to vote on Policy 115. What this has become, for some reason, is Mrs. Jesse's travel. And I don't really understand how we as a board can justify wasting taxpayer dollars, because this is not just about Mrs. Jesse's travel, it just so happens to be, she is the one on the board who has taken the most travel reimbursement, but it is a right by all of us. And somehow, this became a political fight, instead of us acting like a corporate body and addressing this as the policy that it is, because it doesn't say on here, "Mrs. Jesse, Policy 115." But what has happened is, Mrs. Jesse has been repeatedly bullied for a lot of things, and it just so happened to manifest on this policy vote and discussion. I'm a little irritated by that, personally. I try to keep my personal feelings out of it, but it doesn't make very much sense. What I would like to remind this board is, no travel is approved that is illegal. As we were just reminded not that long ago, we have a 23-year, award-winning finance department, period. No matter whose travel reimbursement comes through, I bet you, nobody in the finance department is willing to stake their reputation and approve something that is not justifiable by law. Number one. Number two, if you get an invitation to something as a board member, because that's the only reason they even know your name for this event, whether it's an event at a church, it's an event at a school, it's an event at somebody's home, it is our elected duty to represent our constituency and the school division. And if you get an invitation, that is an official duty. So if you didn't get invited to Future Kings, or you didn't get invited to Sinclair's whatever, that's your personal issue as a board member. Call them up, tell them you invited them. If you don't go, you don't put in the reimbursement, but it's still your choice to go or not. That's plain and simple. Once you become invited to something, it becomes an official duty. Otherwise, they would have no reason to contact you. I've gone to all kinds of events, and from my beginning six years ago, I got very few events. Now I have more events than I have time to go to. And I personally have never been invited to Future Kings, but I'd like to go, I hear it's pretty cool. I know it's on the other side of the county, I don't often get to go there, but if it was held in my district and I went, I'd want to be reimbursed, should I have time to actually do that, which I usually don't, because it's just me, again, we have no staff. I did have the opportunity to go to NSBA this past weekend, which, for the members of the audience, that is the National School Board Association Conference. I was able to speak with other school board members around the nation, and just to bring it home, because we like to, in this county, for some reason, compare our service to Fairfax County all the time, I was able, myself, personally, to verify from the entire school board, because I did get to speak with them, I have a picture too, if you want to verify that I was actually with them, I can send that out to the board later. But they do, in fact, have the ability to reimburse for their travel in and outside their own district, and they themselves are not personally responsible for putting that travel reimbursement. Their staff does it for them for the moment they walk out the door. It is up to their discretion, personally as board members, to tell their staff whether or not that they would like it to be submitted, but it's recorded off the break. It's just disheartening that we spend so much time attacking each other, I'm not sure if it's because it's an election year, I'm not sure what it's for. But that's really why we're up here talking about this policy so long, so repeatedly, because it's not unusual to bring something back, at all. It's happened several times in the six years I've been here. What is unusual is the constant, repeated uptick, upticking of attacks, like tonight. You know, I don't have a problem calling anybody by name, because what I say in public and private, I'm going to say it regardless, I'm a very bad liar, my memory is not that great.
Ms. Williams, I do want to interrupt the parliamentarian, no, 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 one sec. The parliamentarian has brought up the fact that we need to confine our remarks to the merits of the pending question and refrain from attacking members.
Sure. I'm not attacking anybody.
I'm just following what the parliamentarian is saying.
I just want to reiterate that right before we did this motion, there was a call to question, and that means that we, just to generally, you know, we don't have discussion. Actually, you know what, I'm going to save that for board matters. What I will say in relation to this is, once again, this policy comes down to our travel being reimbursed and going through all the proper procedures and protocol that every other person reimburses for travel. If it was not legal, if it was not reimbursable, it would not be reimbursed. And this body, just like every, lots of other bodies surrounding us, just like I've experienced in my professional career outside of the school division, in every single job I've had, even being a clerk at the Pentagon, to now working for a small private company, when I leave my office site, I'm allowed to record my miles, my expenses, whatever the case may be. And I just want this board to once again consider that this is not about Mrs. Jesse specifically, it is about us on this board and everybody else that comes after us. And it really is part of an American legacy for elected officials to be able to have reimbursement. It opens the door for more than just one economic class to be able to sit in this position. Nobody does this for money, nobody, because you wouldn't be able to survive or eat. So I hope that as we make a vote tonight, we can take out Mrs. Jesse and put in any board member and future board members, because that's who this vote is about.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay. Ms. Jesse, I will, as I promised, let you respond. So we are in round one still of comments. Again, I'm new to this. I think we need to limit discussion for each board member. I know it's already gone out, I wanted to give Ms. Jesse some time, I wanted to give Ms. Allison, Ms. Satterwhite some time to respond. So, Ms. Jesse, your chance, you can- So, Ms. Jessie, your chance, you can respond, and then I'm gonna try to keep this chairman's prerogative right. I can say like two minutes, three minutes?
You may, but I'd like to emphasize that under the parliamentary rules, we are confined, the remarks of the board members are confined to the merits of the measure and not the motives of other members, et cetera. And that's where I think we're gonna get in a little far field.
Okay. So starting from this point, we're gonna, I'm gonna keep it at two minutes, and Ms. McGowan is gonna also stay on track, help me out with the merits of this. So, Ms. Jessie, as I promised, you can respond.
Thank you. Renee Marsh, Renee Lacy, huh? I was asked to speak. I was invited. The affair where they were raising money, I was invited again because it was a scholarship opportunity for Renee Marshall. I go to Hilton Chapel because they invite me every year as a dignitary, and I stand and wave. That's what I do. I, I'm just floored that you have taken the, no, I don't, I don't want to say something The finance department looks at everything. I have lived at, on Amisaw Road for 25 years. For 25 years, I have put 22 miles back and forth for the school board on my travel. They changed it to MapQuest, and I was using my odometer. I had to pay them back for one point, I think it was 1.6 miles. I have done nothing to warrant what is happening here tonight, where you've listed everything as if you're the judge and the jury. You have no rules. You have no orientation for new people.
Mr. Chairman.
And I've talked about this.
Yes, we're at, Ms. Jessie, thank you. Ms. McGowan.
It's out of order.
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak? Discussion on this topic. I'm gonna say something. Okay. Before we wrap up, I'll do two minutes. Watch me, Ms. Ralston, you got that, or? Yeah, right, there we go. Okay. Just want to clarify something. So I've maintained a consistent position on this since the board voted 8-0 unanimously to adopt a policy that we all agreed on back in October. Like Ms. Jessie and other board members, I also like to visit my schools. In fact, last week, I made my 500th classroom visit to Grand Park Middle School since January of 2016. This does not include my nighttime events. I mention all this because, as I've said repeatedly, I do not fundamentally believe we should be reimbursed by our residents to travel to the K L C or schools within our districts. I believe this is part of the job that I've been committed to, and I maintain a consistent position on this all throughout this process with anyone who would have spoken to me. As one of two former P W C teachers on this board, Ms. Jessie being the other, I always remember where I started in my time at the schools. I have to reflect on this because in talking to teachers about this, and talking to others and administrators, our teachers do not receive mileage to drive to their work. Our teachers do not receive mileage to attend parent-teacher conferences. Our teachers do not get reimbursed to attend P T O meetings, school fundraisers, concerts, and events. Our teachers do not receive mileage to attend P D at the K L C and the conferences. Our teachers who sponsor clubs and coach do not receive mileage if they choose to drive to the sporting events. As I've maintained all along, as a former teacher, I cannot support a policy for this, which we do not also grant our teachers. As was stated in, by other comments, I support allowing the board members to attend conferences out of the district. I support P D for board members out of their district to attend conferences. I support, support board members to serve on committees in Richmond or other areas in their school board capacity. I support travel outside of the district if you are invited at a conference or a school-wide event. I support reimbursement to graduations to schools. The majority of the board, as was stated by a couple speakers, voted for the salary increase, which doubles the salary of the Prince William County School Board members next term. Although I did not support this in the markup session and supported a more incremental pay raise, I do understand the merits of allowing and expanding opportunities to others who might be economically disadvantaged. For all these reasons, I support the reimbursements that are currently stated, but I cannot support a policy that reimburses travel to the K L C for what I believe is our job and to visiting district schools within our districts. I'm happy to speak to anyone about this who's disappointed with this decision offline at your convenience. Ms. Williams?
I just, I, based upon your comment, I just want to know if we had clarification. I know that most teachers, when they're, are they allowed to be reimbursed when they leave their work site to attend other events, like say, a professional learning community outside of their school? I mean, I know that they would not be reimbursed to attend in their own building, because that's their actual office, per se, like for a P T O event or after-school soccer game or such. But when they are leaving for training purposes, for example, is that a reimbursable item according to the regulation that is currently, that we currently have?
Mr. Wilk, members of the board, our regulation does not prevent that reimbursement, but it's not something that we see frequently. If it were something that were turned in, we would pay, we would pay that reimbursement.
So, thank you, Mr. Wallingford. I appreciate that. So I just wanted to make sure that the public was clear. Mr. Wilk and any member of the board is absolutely, without, within their rights to have their personal beliefs and why they choose to vote, whichever way that they do. I just wanted to make sure that the public was not confused, and by that statement in particular, because it jumped out as me, for me specifically. And I also know that coaches and additional support staff this year in the budget, we gave them a stipend that was approved by this board to help offset those costs. So that is, in a way, it's not a reimbursement for mileage, per se, but it was something that we as a board saw fit to help increase our rate of volunteerism and our rate of teachers and other people to come volunteer for things like games and other activities. So they were sort of given a stipend and a well. I just want to make sure that the public is clear that when we're talking about the same rate of reimbursement as employees, that teachers and other staff have that right, and that is a right that we are taking away from if we vote again, and it does not pass, that that would be a vote, that would be something that we would continue to deny our, not only this board, but future boards, and it would not be in alignment with the current policy and procedures that staff has.
No, no, no. One minute, is that fine? Can you?
I just want to clarify something. When he says to come to work, my home is my office. So when I leave that house, I'm going to another location. I don't want anyone to think at the end of this conversation, Mr., you have a right as a principal, back to school nights. I cannot tell you. There are, teachers come back for meetings, and I understand that the teachers are concerned about this, but I know teachers are reimbursed, one. And two, I must have gone to 30 or 40 events a year. So principals are coming and going to every event. You can have your vote and do whatever you think is right, but I don't want anyone to walk away thinking that I want to be paid to come to work. So I, my, my position tonight, the reason I felt so strongly, is that this type of thing has been going on, and they say they didn't call my name, but they made a list of everything that I've done, every place I've been, and listed it.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Okay.
The vote is two yes, five no. Motion failed.
18:05, moving on to board, I'm sorry, Board Matters. I think we adopted, was it, the three-minute policy on that?
Yes. We did adopt it.
Okay. Can you, can we put on, yeah, because I'm clearly lying to you. Can we have the timer, please? Thank you. Mr. Deutsch, let's start down with you.
I think we started with me last time. Can we start on the other side?
I, I wasn't the chair at that last meeting. Thank God. Ms. Satterwhite, let's go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. And, Mr. Vice Chairman, thank you for filling in tonight and doing a very good job. I appreciate it. As Dr. Waltz already shared, we've seen each other quite a bit at Battlefield High School and in the Gainesville District. Also want to give a shout out to Sinclair Elementary School for 50 wonderful years of educating students. It was fabulous to see our students doing their thing on display, singing and dancing with numbers through the years, and then also to hear stories from what's happened in the past at the school. And as Dr. Waltz mentioned, at Battlefield High School, the literacy lab with instructor Jamie Marsh and the student authors released a book, and we had the book signing. It was an absolutely fabulous event. Congratulations to Battlefield High School and Buckland Mills, again, for their School of Excellence ceremony. Coming up very soon, you might have seen the announcements for the Boundaries, 13th High School Boundaries. The time has come, and we're gonna start looking at the Boundaries. The first meeting is April 11th, and I hope everybody will turn out for that. You can find information in Prince William County Schools, and also, I've got it on my Facebook page. I have a feeling Mr. Trenum will probably put it out also. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Mr. Trenum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first off, I want to thank the following schools for allowing me to participate in the School of Excellence celebrations. Buckland Mills Elementary School, Teckley Wood Elementary School, and Victory Elementary School. That was always wonderful, and it's my last round of School of Excellence, so that was especially happy to be able to attend this. I also want to kind of change the mood a little bit and lighten things. This is a very unique opportunity here this year. Three of the four teams that are represented in March Madness and C double eight tournament is represented on the school board this year. So I would like to propose a friendly wager. Depending on which team, so what I would suggest is, of course, say no. I'm a Red Raider, Mr. Wilk is a Michigan State Spartan, and Dr. Latif.
And a U V A. I have two teams.
You have two, okay. Oh, that even, makes it even better. And then, Dr. Latif is also U V A Oahu. So what I would suggest is if Texas Tech wins the entire thing, then I will bring hats or, Texas, I will supply you and Dr. Latif with appropriate Texas Tech hats and maybe possibly some other paraphernalia to wear that you would wear for the duration of the subsequent school board meeting, with the exception of the invocation and the pledge, of course. And I will do the same if you all.
I'll do the Spartans. I'll take them, and then Dr. Latif can do. I'll speak for him. Yes, he'll be in.
Right, he's not here. And then, in the unlikely and abhorrent possibility that Auburn actually comes soon and wins, I will buy an appropriate hat, and Dr. Waltz can wear it for the entire meeting.
Okay. Are you good, Mr. Trenum? Okay, awesome. Ms. Ralston?
I want to thank the school nurses. I didn't look at it closely before, and here's my opportunity. And the way, reason I want to thank them is because what they did for my granddaughter. And that is just, I mean, they did everything for her. They diagnosed a condition with, with her back, and I just keep saying all, over and over, is that it's a good thing that we have the nurses that we have. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston.
I'll pass.
Good.
Okay, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilks. I just want to say that I enjoy hearing from our student S D A presidents, student S D A's, from our S D A presidents. I always enjoy when our student body comes before the board to share their ideas, considering we make up the majority of laws that govern their day-to-day lives, because they spend the majority of the time with us. I value their input. I, myself, am a graduate from George Mason University and was allowed to decorate my cap. I did not think about it for high schools, but it seems like a pretty cool idea, considering that our students, as the S A president made a very good point, often don't go on to college. I am a fan, and I am glad to support that. I'm not sure that all of our principals and our staff would be happy, but as someone who did that, I think that's a very awesome idea. I'd like to congratulate Sasan for having facilitated a meeting, and then, of course, in doing so, I'm sure that gave the extra boost to have those students come in and speak before us, which I think is vital. In addition to that, I'm gonna have further updated the next meeting, but I was able to attend the National School Board Association. The theme seemed to be this year, equity. As I have been saying for the past several weeks, as I was inspired by Ms. Jessie, I think it would be a great idea for this board to consider having an equity committee developed. I had the opportunity to speak with other school boards about this and would like to bring further information to present before the board later on down the road. I would like to congratulate Freedom on their upcoming, hopefully, restaurant. That was an idea that I had shared with Ms. Goss. I will take no credit for what they are doing, but I am a big fan of continuing education and providing something that is in-house for our students to do once they leave us. And I think that that is a perfect example of a way to do that. I was remiss earlier in not congratulating the nurses. I have family members that are probably waiting to stab me for that, because they are nurses. We can't survive without nurses. Doctors are amazing, but it's the nurses that keep us alive, give us the right medicine, make sure we're eating the right foods, and do all of really the, the hands-on, dirty work that needs to be done on a day-to-day basis. And I talk to Featherstone quite frequently, because my son loves to talk to her. We'll leave it at that. And she is a wonderful lady, and I'm so glad this budget is supporting one nurse per every school. I do want to make sure that the public is aware that what we did tonight on this vote was take away a board's member's ability to be reimbursed for any expense within their own district, which does not align with what we do for our staff in that same sense. And I don't normally do this, but I am personally a little upset that we, as a board, tried to silence each other before this vote was taken, because it's integral that everybody have the opportunity to share, and I'm a little offended that that was done, and then speeches were actually prepared for rebuttal.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Jessie?
The National Association of School Boards. I think that, this year, I think there were only three of us. Three? Three of us. We talk about that this is a require. The National School Board Association encourages us to attend professional development, and one, the theme this year really was equity. And I've been talking about equity for quite some time. In fact, I do have a meeting with you. I'm anxious to see what you guys have put together. I think you, we really do need to look at this whole idea of other persons being involved in a committee and some type of ongoing assessment. persons being involved in a committee and some type of ongoing assessment. But, the thing that I learned this time, took me a while, the school boards do the what, and you guys are supposed to do the how. I'll see if I can keep that in mind. I doubt if I will, but if I see something good, I just really want to share it. And I want to congratulate Dr. Waltz. Dr. Waltz was asked to speak in this forum and share, uh, the technology Amazon, uh, was provided this. It was a major affair, because we actually had food in the room. It was very important, people from Amazon, and Dr. Waltz was the star, and he did a really, I said, "Don't blow this," just before he spoke. But he really did a good job of representing us and representing Prince William County Public Schools. I have nothing more to say about, uh, what happened here tonight. Um, it is what it is. But as Nixon would say, "I'm not a crook."
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Um, just want to first apologize for Dr. Latif. Um, as many of you know, he, um, is, uh, he has two of his own practices. He does perform emergency surgery and duty at hospitals, uh, and that's where he is tonight. So as much as he wishes he could have been here for this fun, uh, he was, um, at a surgery, and this is the first meeting he has missed since taking, uh, the chairmanship of the board. So he asked me to apologize in his absence. Do want to recognize autism awareness. Uh, my oldest son is non-verbal on the autism spectrum. Um, I just want to commend and thank the district for expanding early childhood intervention and pre-K. Uh, my son was identified very early, uh, by having two parents who are educators and a grandma who said, "Something seems a little different with Dominic." Um, and we recognized it. We had him tested, and fortunately, because of that, we've been able to get world-class services in the school division. So, uh, April's a very important month, uh, to us and my household, um, so I want to recognize that. Uh, I do want to mention a couple events. I did attend, uh, Grand Park Middle School. Uh, did fill my board brief, which will be coming out next. I had the pleasure of also including Dr. Alice Howard, uh, and her great work of what they're doing with the Committee of 100 Black Women for Grand Park Middle School and their program. That'll be released soon. Um, I did attend, like Dr. Waltz, Unified Track Event at Forest Park. This is a great event for anyone who doesn't know, where all of our high schools, uh, and their students with disabilities participate, um, in track and field events, and it was hosted this year at Forest Park. I want to thank that dedicated staff. Um, I did a little something different this year, uh, about getting budget feedback. Um, I had met with student groups. Um, so I did meet with the Forest Park AP Government students in two classes, uh, to discuss the budget, hear concerns and feedback. I also spent time with the student, uh, SCA at Potomac High School, uh, to discuss their budget and concerns. Common themes, just concerns about standard-based grading at Forest Park, um, concerns about multicultural awareness and training, which the board, we've talked about many a times before. Um, so those are just some things that the students brought up that I'm working with staff to just get responses for. Uh, want to recognize the Safe School Advisory Council event that we had, uh, Associate Superintendent Hart and her entire team. Um, another great conference this year. Every year, we tackle a topic. Uh, this year was resiliency, and there was a great presentation, uh, with over 100 attendees. I think we had more people than we've ever had in a long time, um, at Colgan High School, uh, for a great presentation. Ms. Satterwhite was with me at that event, too. The other member, and yes, Ms. Ralston, you were there, absolutely. Uh, and then finally, recognize STEM Night at, uh, Henderson, sixth event, uh, that they've had, uh, sixth annual one with Dr. Waltz. And with five seconds left, that is it, and I am going-